Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the October 4th work session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone, and before we get started, I would like to have a moment of silence because this council has lost two good friends. First, Rick Dwyer, who works for the county, worked under the county, very good friend of us, and Ms. Jane Hagan, who is a councilperson from North Beach. So please take a moment of silence. Thank you. As always, at the end of the meeting, we will have comments, if you'd like to make comments, relative to those specific items on the agenda that are listed, and we'd be happy to hear what you have to say. First up on the agenda, we have a rather light agenda today. First up is nonconforming use zoning exemption, and for that, we'll have Housing and Community Development Director Ron Strickler lead us in that discussion.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So you may recall, this is probably in, I believe it was January, first introduced this as just a general item to talk and get some ideas from council, specifically regarding the zoning exemption program. Since then, we've done quite a deal of work. I think initially, when we talked about this program, it was identified through our rental registration process that there were opportunities in the city where people could make improvements to communities that weren't allowed to get these rental licenses, and ultimately, through the program now, had determined not only can we eliminate blight, vacant properties, but we know we are facing a housing shortage in Salisbury and across the country. So this would serve two purposes, and our housing initiative announced last week would definitely partner and fall right in line with that. We can briefly go through an overview of the program itself, and some of the updates that we've made in your work session. You can see I included the PowerPoint presentation, which is probably the easiest thing to follow along with.
It'll be fine.
So essentially, we would be amending 1716040. Just as a reference, this did go through the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 16th of September with a favorable recommendation. So we would essentially be adding a section into nonconforming use that would provide an exemption. One of the important pieces is through the communication that we've had with the attorneys and other departments, we feel it is important that this program would be a 12-month program that would be approved for one calendar year for application. Essentially, the program objectives are to increase property value, tax revenue, neighborhood stability, housing, and also additional revenues for the city. The decrease that we would see in the community would be calls for service for crimes and vandalism, that these are directly related to vacant properties, blight in the city, and city absorbed maintenance expenses. As you may or may not be aware, my department does a great deal of work at these properties when they're not maintained, and they are then processed as liens against the property, which add up over time, and the loss of city taxes. So you could obviously see how that could turn things around at some of these properties. The eligibility requirements, so there are essentially two eligibility requirements. The first would be any vacant property that has lost its nonconforming use. So the definition of vacant property is that it would have to have sat vacant for one year. The second would be any property that had lost its nonconforming use in the last five years. So someone that has recently purchased a property that may have been vacant, or that had lost its nonconforming use prior to that within the last 60 months. So the application itself, when we talk about the 12-month program, it must be submitted within 12 months of this legislation passing, and that would be added into the ordinance itself. The council would then have the opportunity to extend that if they so choose. If we see success in the program, I believe that would probably be a recommendation that we would make, but that would be the option for council. Property owners would have to be in good standing with the city of Salisbury, whether it be a new property owner or a current property owner. Good standing would be defined as no delinquent taxes on properties, no outstanding code violations, and no condemned properties without approved rehabilitation plans. So if we have a condemned property, we would require a rehabilitation plan that has been approved, and the permits would have had been applied for to remove that condemnation. The application process would go through Housing and Community Development in correlation with the Department of Architecture and Development. Those plans would include architectural renderings. We would want, we would look at the history of the historical and current proof of property investment, plans for adequate off-street parking. This was probably one of the biggest things we talked about, is we want to ensure that we're allowing the current population living in these communities the same access they have to off-street parking and on-street parking. So it would be one required parking space per unit. We know that there are other opportunities. If they are not able to provide that onsite parking, they could always buy a lot pass. I'm thinking of a couple of communities where we have these properties that they could provide parking in that manner, too. So they would have to prove that. And then they would have to agree to adhere to federal, state, local fair housing guidelines, any expectation that we would currently accept for a property owner that is renting their property. The terms of the exemption program, obviously, applicable permits are required for rehabilitation, and then there would be a probationary period of three years. One of the things that we had discussed in this section here was minimal calls for service. Additionally, when we had presented the legislation back in February, I believe it was, or January, we wanted to maintain minimal calls for service from PD, and it was listed as three per property. That has since changed to three per unit. If you were to have a three-unit property and one unit had three calls for service, that could negatively impact two families or individuals that are living at the residence. So it would have to be three per unit. We could obviously, with individual units, we could revoke a license for an individual unit that wouldn't affect the other folks at that property. Second would be maintain minimal code violations. So code violations generally are going to be exterior unless, because we're going to be inspecting these properties yearly. So when we expect it initially, you know, they're going to know what we need from them. We don't think we're going to have problems there, but when we talk about exterior code violations, I would say that's where that category would fall into, that would be three per year, whether it be rubbish, grass, weeds, that type of thing. They must maintain codes and standards of livability requirement, much like any other landlord in the city of Salisbury, and again, it's subject to yearly inspections. The probationary period, landlord license or rental unit cost, so it would be a $500 application fee for these properties, and then there would be an increase in the annual fee for both the landlord license registration and also the rental unit registration would increase from 120 to 240, simply because we would be inspecting these properties. There would be the application process for both DID and also HCDD. Just like the code states, at any point in time after this program goes into effect, if this property would sit vacant for 12 months, it would lose its nonconforming use, much like it would any other time. So that would keep the property owner encouraged to maintain the property with upkeep.
That's good. Quite a change and improvement from the beginning when we started talking about it. Questions from the council?
I think what you did, you took our conversation and our concerns, and you wrote it in here. 100% behind everything on here as I read through it this weekend, and this is long overdue, and I think this will help fix, help fix a lot of problems. How many properties do you anticipate being affected by this?
We've got a count of 20, around 20 properties right now, but we believe that there may be more that we are unaware of. I mean, we know of properties that have been purchased, acquired, and then they started the process only to find out that it had lost its nonconforming use, whether they were told that or not when they purchased the property. So we know there are quite a few that we would see move forward, and I think it'll create a market in itself, the program, even if these vacant properties aren't occupied, whether it be the current owner or whether they put it on the market to allow it to sell. And, you know, I think the important piece about that is it's going to increase property values all around it, which will be good for the community and the city.
Thank you. I have one point of clarification. Who's going to track the calls for service?
It's going to have to be a collaboration between the police department and us. So part of the application process would be keeping a list of these properties and each unit at that, and we would have to check up with the police department, keep it on our radar. And one of the things that Housing Community Development does is we partner with the police department on the CompStat calls biweekly, and I see that as an option for us to get that information.
Okay.
Okay. When is this actually going to take place?
Well, my hope would be about a month from now, so we could see that go into effect.
I was just trying to calculate.
I think it's about five weeks.
So you're saying that the property cannot be vacated at any time in the 12-month period?
For a 12-month period. So essentially, once the legislation would pass, say it would be, just for reference, November 1st, the property owner or the purchaser of the property would have until October 31st of 2022 to apply for the program, at which point, once the application is approved, the property owner would have 12 months to finish and renovate that project. It must be usable within 12 months. After that point, once they receive their occupancy permit and they get tenants in the building, from that point forward, it could not sit vacant for more than 12 months. So it would still require, much like the code does now, for it to be vacant for 12 months in order to lose that nonconforming use. So if it sat vacant for one month, it's not going to lose that nonconforming use, whether it be an individual unit or the entire property itself. If any part of the unit is, or any part of the property is occupied, so if you have one of three units occupied, it would not be considered vacant.
So if you have one unit that is being occupied, that keeps it conforming?
Yes.
So if you have a house that's not being used, it's vacant, blight, whatever, and you said you've only found 20 properties?
20 properties that we know of that this would apply to. So there are many more vacant properties, yes, but that have lost their nonconforming use, that would be a multi-rental. So with the difference between multi-rental and single-family use, that's really the definition here. So there are other single-family residential properties in the city that would not qualify, unless at one point in time, they did have that nonconforming use. But if they're set up right now for single-family, the chances are that that did not exist.
The only other comment that I have would be, since this is a one-year program, if you could mark it down, and maybe, Kim, you could put a note down, in six months, could we just have a brief update as to where we are, where we, you know, where we, looking forward, we can see if we have five that have come off the list, then that's progress.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, and the other piece is, is this is a program that we will want to get out to the public as well, and I'm sure it will spread very quickly that we're allowing this to happen. I mean, some of these properties, and if we say five, we could provide 15 additional units of housing for people that want to move here and people that already live here.
Right. We have consensus to move it forward. This is Gregory. Any comments?
No comments. You guys asked the questions I was going to ask.
Okay.
Move it forward.
Good. Then we'll move this forward and put it on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Strickler.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the hard work. Mr. Mayor, any comments on this, on that item?
Well, look, it's entirely possible that, you know, people who have been paying attention to the city of Salisbury's approach to neighborhood and housing-related policies and legislation would look at this as a departure from the way we've been handling it in the past, but the reality is that a vacant home is a further blighting influence than a home that was designed in, you know, 1920 for one family, and today, or at some point, was cut up into having three or four. This does not enable, you know, me to turn my home into three or four apartments. It doesn't enable you to do that. What it does is recognize that there are vacant homes. It recognizes reality. So I think the city council adopting legislation that acknowledges reality is not only a reasonable response, but let's remember, and you've alluded to this already tonight, we have a crisis, and everything that we can do to get safe, accessible, and affordable housing units online, we ought to do. So, bravo. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is a budget amendment for Safe Station Program, and Chief John Tull. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How's everyone?
Fine, thank you.
Yeah, so in front of you is a budget amendment, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Wycomico County Health Department and the City of Salisbury Fire Department for the purpose of accepting funds for our services to provide non-emergent medical checks for people that are enrolled in the Safe Station Program. This is a continuation of another year, and FY '20 and FY '21, we have provided the same service.
Was the amount the same last time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought it was. Okay.
The difference is this year, it's because of their cycle of funding. We originally got it in September, so in FY '21, it was only 7,500 with the, yes, with the break.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. Questions for the chief?
No.
Thank you.
I have one.
Michelle, any questions?
Nope. No question.
Good. Great, great program. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
We'll move that forward. Next up, we have an ordinance approving a tax credit for Habitat for Humanity. Nate Sansom will, special assistant to the mayor, will do the presentation. Good afternoon, Nate.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. In front of you right now is an ordinance that will extend a tax, or create a tax credit to assist Habitat for Humanity in rehabilitating and constructing new homes within the city of Salisbury. And essentially, the tax credit will, the ordinance will amend Title III to create this tax credit, which will be valid for up to five years, for as long as the property is under development by Habitat. And looking at data submitted by Habitat for Humanity, their average for rehabbing a property or a new construction has been 2.88 years for the properties that we have on the books for them. And so although we'd be allowing for a tax credit for up to five years, in reality, they're only going, likely only going to use about three years of that credit for each property that they are developing within the city. And so in front of you, you have the drafted ordinance, as well as my memo that was submitted first to the mayor and then to you, the council. And if I may just go through a couple other aspects of it, looking at the fiscal impact on the city, we see that the administration believes it's most definitely, this is most definitely worth the investment. Looking at data provided by finance, the realized impact of this would be over, just over $1,500 per year in lost tax revenue from the real property tax. And so when you're looking at that, and that was for 11 different Habitat properties that are currently on the books that would be eligible for the credit. And so looking at that, and then looking at what those properties are worth after they are rehabilitated or they're built, it's just a wonderful asset to the city and also to those new homeowners who are moving into those properties that Habitat is building or rehabbing. This is something that we aren't reinventing the wheel on. This is done in, many counties throughout the state have done this. Essentially, what we're doing is we're just tacking on to enabling legislation that the state has in the tax property article, the tax property article that allows us to create this tax credit. So it's not unheard of. It's done in a number of other counties, including Anarondle, Caroline, St. Mary's, but municipalities also have the authority to provide this tax credit as well, and that's exactly what we would like to do. This is a part of Mayor Day's vision for Here Is Home that was announced last week, and part of his visionary leadership and plan to make housing more accessible and affordable throughout our city.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Has there been any, are we doing anything as far as like a water sewer credit during that period of time?
There wouldn't be water and sewer usage during that time, so likely wouldn't have service turned on. I'll turn it over to Molly if she has anything. No. So there wouldn't be a water and sewer bill.
And have we reached out to the county to partner on this as well?
I believe, my understanding is that Habitat has reached out to the county in the past.
With previous administrations, they did, and they said they would be interested if you went first.
Okay.
Apparently, the county--
Strongly support.
I'm fine with going first. We like being the leader, so I fully support this.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I support it. My daughter is a recipient and a homeowner through Habitat, and Molly worked with my daughter and worked with my daughter till she got where she is. I appreciate that, Molly. I appreciate Habitat for what they've done, and we need more homeowners, and we need more homes here, more affordable housing, so I am behind you 100%. I support you.
Thank you, April. Michelle?
Excuse the big ball of light behind me. I didn't realize the sun was going to be coming right about now. So this is an amazing opportunity, and I think there are so many families out there who would love to become homeowners but have not been able to. So I'm really excited about this, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Michelle. As I stated at the announcement the other day, I've been on the council for a little while, and I think that this, more than a little while, okay. I think that this is probably one of the most important pieces of legislation that I've been involved with, and I like to look at it as the Here Is Home is a three-legged stool. This is the first leg. We got two more to go, and I look forward to participating in, because again, I mean, how many times can we use the word crisis? And this is just another way of providing homes for people who wouldn't necessarily be able to, and giving them some stability that they've probably never experienced. So I'm totally in favor of it, and I'm for moving it forward as well. So thank you, Mr. Sansom. Appreciate it.
Good.
Yes?
Mayor, I would also like to let you know that we support you as well with this.
Thank you.
I didn't want to leave you. I'm going to leave.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, any comments?
If I may. So a couple of things. One, I do want to point out, in this piece of legislation, there's a requirement for an annual report to the mayor and council by Habitat. I just want to be clear that that is not intended to be a cumbersome thing, just to make sure we know what properties are being included. The second part of this is that, you know, this is step 1A of that three-legged stool. So steps two and three are to come, but so are some other steps associated with this. On October 18th, you'll see additional pieces of legislation, and then a few more after that, as we finalize the Here Is Home work. But the next step in that process affects Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Service, which just has to be managed in a different way because of the limitations of the state enabling legislation. So I just want to make sure everybody's tracking that, that this does not exclude them, but this piece of legislation, again, based on the state enabling legislation specifically, enables us to do this for Habitat for Humanity. So that's the second piece. The third thing that I would say is that, you know, as we continue to go down this road, we'll want to continue to keep council updated on the impact, so we'll want to know, and we'll want to share with you each of the steps forward in terms of housing units as they're developed. So we are foregoing some revenue. You know, this number is modest, but there's going to be other numbers that you hear about revenue that we are foregoing, but we're doing it for, I think, the right reasons and without financial risk to the organization and to our taxpayers. So I feel very confident that the fiscal notes for each of these bills will show you that the city of Salisbury is willing to give a little in order to gain a lot back for our citizens.
Yes, I'm glad you said about tracking, because my engineering says dashboards are really good, and look forward to seeing, I'm looking at you, Ron, so I like to see good, positive numbers, especially in this area. Can't be more important than this. So, thank you. We have consensus to move it forward, so.
Yes.
Okay. That concludes the items on the agenda for today. At this point, I have two requests to speak, and Molly, will you come up, please, and go to the podium? I've got mine. Michelle, we'll save one for you. We got it. We'll make sure you get it. Okay.
Okay, first of all, I'm Molly, you guys know me, I'm Molly Hilligas, but for those in the audience and online, I'm Molly Hilligas, the executive director of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County. And for the public, I just wanted to share some economic impact, because it's not just saving, you know, a couple thousand dollars for each home that we're, as we're building it, but while we're building the home, there are positive impacts that come back to the city and the county and the state. So for example, there's a one-time economic impact of each new home built, and these are $20,020 of $236,973, and these numbers were tabulated by Dr. Memo DeRica at the SU Beacon Center. Also during construction, and this would be new home construction or renovation, labor income generated by each house during that time period would be $74,356. Local tax revenues generated by each house would be $3,017, and that would be things like the taxes when you, you know, when we buy things at Lowe's, or Home Depot, or what have you, the taxes. The lifetime economic impact of each new house in $20,020 is $1.7 million. That's pretty amazing. So obviously, we want to build as many houses as we can to see all these important impacts. In terms of lifetime labor income generated from each house for all the subcontractors that we hire, so on average, we're supporting 39 jobs with each home, so that is 1.2 million in lifetime labor income generated, and lifetime local tax revenues is $157,493. Those lifetime impacts are calculated over 30 years, and tax rate increases are assumed to average 2% per year. So that's pretty amazing. So I just wanted to share that with the public, that it's, that there's a huge return on investment to the city. The other pages I have attached here are some other, just information that the public might be interested in. The second page shows how much we've spent on emergency rental assistance since the pandemic, and that has been 2.4 million. The bulk of that has been in the city limits. We've saved 1,000-- The bulk of that has been in the city limits. We've saved 1,259 individuals from eviction. And the last page, now this is a lot of information, but it's an analysis I did with evictions in Maryland and Wycomico County, unless something happens differently, which we have a plan for that, which involves a lot of financial literacy training. On average, there will be 444 executed evictions, which means not just a court case, but these are families that will be, the knock on the door with the sheriff, they will be evicted, 444 families. So that's based on data from September 2019 to February 2020 annualized. That's a lot of families. So. But with, hopefully, the more homes that we can build, the more families can become homeowners. And our current mortgage payment, which includes taxes and insurance, is around $650 a month. And that's much more affordable than even rent right now. So we want to double our impact or more.
Great. Thank you very much.
That's about it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If you heard a noise from over here, Molly, that was me about to make the joke that a 2% increase in property taxes per year is a huge overestimation, given that we've been able to keep taxes fly for many years. But it's a good way to calculate the economic impact. We'll just have to let Memo know.
Yes.
Lower that number.
Yeah. We also have Mr. Michael Langford, that wants to talk about non-conforming use. He'll come on by himself.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to, had some general remarks and thoughts to share. I'd heard about the mayor's proposal and wanted to throw support behind that. So these are my thoughts. Narrative is how we create meaning in our lives, as well as navigate the world. And storytelling is essential to what it means to be human. Sometimes stories we tell help, and sometimes they make lives more difficult. Narrative can be a gateway or a barrier to true understanding. In the spirit of that insight, I would like to share a summary of recent experiences while working at Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County. I worked on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and until recently, the CDBGT, CV112 Emergency Motel Hotel Project. Both of these are grant-funded programs that assist low-income people affected by the pandemic approved by the governor of Maryland. Everyone I've come across in the last year and a half, personally and professionally, have endured hardship in one manner or another due to COVID-19. However, when one becomes at risk of losing their housing, or does in fact lose stable housing, their lives become a struggle no one in the most prosperous nation in history ought to endure. These programs have put me in direct contact with hundreds of individuals in our community have lost or close to losing their housing. Working on the hotel funding, which is for people currently homeless, referred to our agency by another organization, such as a shelter which is full due to COVID. I have encountered mothers, children, displaced youth, veterans, working-class people, barely getting by before the pandemic, who now face a struggle for survival. Some of these people have had a quarantine due to exposure to COVID-19, and do not get paid time off at their place of employment. Some of them have had a reduction in work hours. Some of them have been laid off from a job they held for years prior. None of the effects are their responsibility, yet they bear the consequences. Some of these families have to live in a hotel room for a week or two, and have to arrange a temporary bus stop from the hotel for their children with the Board of Education. When you face homelessness, it is often accompanied by feelings of guilt or shame. Can you imagine accompanying feelings when you call your child's school to arrange transportation under the pretense of currently living at a hotel, but knowing you must divulge this personal information to a stranger because you know the bearing and education has for your children's future? Can you imagine going to a homeless shelter because the weather's growing colder and you can no longer endure the elements, only to hear there's no room for you, when you risked your very life and service for this nation at one time? Can you imagine leaving work today, not to go home, but to a hotel, not for vacation, because there's nowhere else to go, and knowing with each passing day, you come closer to a checkout date that is the end of access to showering facilities, while you know, knowing you must continue to go to work? Most of these mothers must work two or even three jobs when they have a family member or friend who is able to watch their children, just to barely get by. Instead of making memories and imparting important life lessons to their children, they're spending every moment full of worry and yet still striving to provide the essentials to their children. And then they lose their housing. These are not theoretical scenarios, but realities people are facing. These people are not vagrants and undesirables. They are those who attend your church and community organizations. They play sports and perform arts with your children. They are your neighbors. They're valuable members of this community whom you already know and love. We must continue to rally to the raid. It is our civic duty. As human beings who traverse life with narratives, we must be careful to watch which narratives are assisting us to grow more tender in our responses, pardon me, and which are causing us to turn a blind eye to harsh realities. It may be hard to face some of these realities, but it's even harder to live them. And this must embolden us to be strong for those in need within our communities. And our response ought to be to grow more compassionate, to ask ourselves, how can I help? And I hear that in this session today, that you are all aware of this, but I just thought sharing and adding to that conversation would be of value. I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to speak on behalf of the struggling in the city, Habitat for Humanity for their hard work and service, and the City of Salisbury providing hope in a dire time of need within our community.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Michael. Appreciate it.
I felt that.
Is it appropriate to applaud at the end of public comment?
Yeah, I think it is.
I felt it.
Yeah. Okay. We're now for comments. Mr. Mayor, comments for the good of the order. It's a tough act to follow, but go ahead and try.
What I would say is, you know, one, I think Michael just said better than, better than I could have. Why this is so important, why the work we're doing with Your In His Home is so important. But what I would also say is that, to, to Michael, and to Cheryl, and to Martin, and to Molly, and to others, don't stop today. Please come back on October 18th, when more legislation is coming forward. As this conversation gets, you know, more complex, not less, you know, I think we're all, we're all trying to achieve the same outcome, so that, you know, I, this is, this is a plug just for, you know, be there, be present, to advocate for and fight for the things that you know are needed in our community. So please, I would say, continue that. And then, secondly, I would just say, you know, thank you for taking this first step on behalf of all of our citizens. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Council comments for the good of the order. Mr. Boda?
Again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing forward the Here Is Home package that we're starting today. I know I've put a little pressure on you since you got back, you know, let's get to work, let's get to work. So it's here. So we're ready to work, ready to do the work. Some of this is going to be a heavy lift. And, but that's what we're here for, to be impactful, to leave the city better than when we, than when we received it. So that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Just took my breath away. Because I do know people that are in those situations right now. And you touched on every base. You went all the way through Salisbury, Wycomico County. It's a lot to have to absorb. And I know the people who are going through this, it's awful. It's awful for me. I have somewhere to stay. But they don't. And Mayor, Molly, and you, young man, and even Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. Let's move this forward as fast as we can, but make sure it's efficient and effective for everyone. Make sure that affordable housing stays, because people need it. People need it. Ron, housing and community. Those code enforcers, when they go out and they do their inspections. Just make, be mindful. Make sure everyone is safe, living safe, and living in wholesome houses and apartments and efficiencies or whatever they're living in. But they're living safe and vibrant. That's what we in Salisbury want to make sure. People are living safely and living in wholesome environments. And I thank every one of you for putting your best foot forward, doing whatever you have to do to make this work. Mayor, I thank you for coming home and just jumping right straight on the gun, just like pew, knowing what needs to be done, because this has been my plight since I was re-elected, this, my last time, is blight and abandoned homes. People need places to stay. And there's no need for us in Salisbury to have, right now, 20 blight or abandoned houses. Someone could be living in those places right now. So I thank each and every one of you. Thank our council. Thank our attorney, everybody that's, Nate, that has their hand in this. Let's continue to keep our hands in this. Let's continue to keep our minds on our people, the people that we govern each and every day. Let this not be about us. Let it be about the people. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Michelle?
Well, it's tough going last. You know, it's gracious. You know, I want to thank my friend Michael for, for coming up and speaking so eloquently. I, myself, have been affected by homelessness in the past. And I know just how desperate it feels. And it is something that could affect anybody, regardless of your class or income. We're all just one tragedy away from not having a place to sleep at night. And I am so, so glad to see our mayor taking leadership on this, and the council for supporting it. And I'm incredibly proud of our city right now. And I think this is something that will set a track record for years to come for all of, all of the state, cities all over the state. And hopefully nationally, because I see cities that are much bigger than us, that have the capability to do something like this, and they're not. They're criminalizing homelessness. And here we are combating the root of it. So I'm incredibly proud of us, and I, I think that, you know, like April said, we need to just remember who we are here to serve, because that's what our job is, to serve. And, you know, I'm very, I'm very, very, very glad to see this, to see this legislation. It means a lot.
Thank you, Michelle. I, I would like to put up a challenge to those people who have doubts about this program. And remember that things can happen. And there but by the grace of God, could I go, or you go. Remember, your family could go. So this is the kind of work, and I'm not belittling bike lanes and monuments and new streets. And, but this is, this is the core of our city. This is people. So before the critics come out, and there will be critics, remember, please remember, there but by the grace of God, go I. We'll see everybody next Monday night. Thank you for coming. Thank you for those who participated, and the meeting is adjourned.